Have a quorum. And the public, and now that he has his mouth full, I'll. If you want to just give me names and summarize the conversation.
Hi, break Chris Barnes, exciting Barrett and Bowles Library Foundation, pleasure to be here. Let's see, Johnny had asked me to update you at our last monthly meeting of the foundation last week. I wanted to let you know that our board ratified the details in your trustee handbook having to do with board membership. And so as you recall, basically, you're kind of following the pattern that the library commission has followed as a practice of having two representatives on the foundation board. And the foundation board has said, yes, we would very much like that. So. That's, that's just to say now our bylaws, as soon as we update them will match your handbook as far as representation on library foundation board. So it'll happen every April. And it'll be you all leaning on who you appoint. It'll be two among you for one year terms. It'll be up to you about, you know, whether those one year terms extend into more than one year. I just want to let y'all know that we like the plan you've come up with and set forth in in your handbook and we'll be updating our bylaws to reflect that. Common understanding.
You also mentioned that you had converted Doug to a district representation.
Doug's been busy. In April, he was brought on to the library foundation board as a regular member of the board, serving a three year term. The next month, he was brought on to the library district board as a trustee. And now that we've settled how this is going to work, we are converting his membership on our board from a three year regular terms to being one of the two representatives from the district on our board. The other, of course, being Sylvia, who's finding triple duty. Has a library commission represented to the foundation board. And now also a library district representative to the foundation board, of course, as soon as the commission is ended, whenever that time may be, we're thinking January-ish. Then we'll be able to update our bylaws on the foundation side to reflect that the mission has ended.
Thank you. Any questions or? So Sylvia and Doug are our reps until April, and then at that point we'll arm wrestle to see who does it next.
Really arm wrestle?
Be like Zuckerberg.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chris. Seeing no other public, I'm going to close the public comment period. And before we do approval of minutes, I'd like to make one addition to the agenda for tonight. At the request of the staffing subcommittee, we are going to consider approval of the health benefits design and management program, the benefits broker. Since that's ready to go and they'd like to keep on truckin'. Okay, so we go to approval of the July minutes. You know, there were some changes sent in over email, which I'm sure. Did anyone have any other changes to the July minutes? Can we get in a motion to approve the minutes of July 11th, July 18th and July 25th?
I'm motion to approve minutes of July 11th, July 18th and July 25th.
Second? Kara seconds. Hey, all those in favor? Okay, six of us. And are we ready to do the August minutes? They were sent out yesterday. Have people had time to review those? If not, we can defer those until speak. So is the corrected version in here?
It's in this.
Yep. In the traffic. Okay.
I reviewed those. I thought that was part of the assignment.
You're a good boy. So is everybody ready to do the August minutes? I mean, we would be caught up. Okay, great. Okay.
I'm making a motion to approve the August 1st and August 8th minutes.
Great. Sam? Hey, all those in favor? I? Caught up. That's great. All right. So I think our next piece is IT. I know that the IT world folks have been just scrambling like crazy. Thank you, Kara and Andy and Doug and me. I know you have been working your tails off since last Tuesday. So thank you, thank you. And we're looking forward to seeing what you've come up with.
I'm gonna open it up and then Amy's gonna take the lead in. Do something, stuff. So my understanding really is that mostly what you want to know is what you need in the IGA and what we need for you to communicate city. And the biggest takeaway really is we need we need some much more open channels for conversations. City, library, IT and whatever staff partners we can bring more than through the RFP process. We're not asking them to give us recommendations. We're not asking them to solve problems for us. We're not asking them to make decisions for us. We just need them to be operating mostly within a set of frameworks which allows for them to give the best advice that they possibly can in response to a direct question about something. So. I believe, and I think through talking to the team, whatever you think of the overall meeting and whatever you think of the presentation last week, that the proposal itself is quite simple and quite in some ways elegant and maybe the best thing that we could have hoped for. So in that respect, good on the city. I think it got logged down a lot of different questions and presumed stuff that they didn't really have clear answers to themselves and didn't want to object on anything. And it got a little messy that way, but otherwise I think the proposal that they made, which we all received on Monday, same time you received it. Was a little bit different than we expected, but I think we have an adequate RFP that's ready to go. Amy's going to talk a little bit about some of the assumptions that we have making, not all of which are good. But when we get to the RFP, I'll talk about my opinions of RFPs in general. And what we really need response to the RFPs is a part is truly a partner to be able to work with us and work with the city in order to execute this project. Amy, I'll kind of leave.
So yeah, it's been a whirlwind week for us. There was a lot to unpack with that presentation and kind of strategize on what is the goal saying, what can we get done fairly swiftly without a lot of overhead by consultants? What's going to take a little bit more thought, a little bit more time? And we tried to incorporate that into the RFP, which will be ready to go tomorrow. So we'll get that RFP tomorrow. There were some assumptions that the team talked about, Andy and Bob, myself and Lisa and Sean about moving completely to the cloud. Hopefully having some flexibility with the city as far as network access while we're making this transition. But overall, I think, I think the team's ready to go. We're excited. We have some direction now on what our priorities need to be and we're ready to get going on it.
Anybody have questions or either myself or Andy or Bob?
I think it would be helpful just to kind of summarize what it is. I never heard what the proposal was in the presentation.
Yeah, so I mean, the proposal, I mean, at its most basic level, it is really to to split the libraries, local ones or help to make the footage. That's shit ton of fiber that's flowing around that supplies much different tests. City is recommending that they will split a portion of that fiber off and hand it to us. And we need to, at that point, design and build and implement best a complete network that's going to be freestanding from what the cities are. And the assumption in that is that most of all those things, I guess 99%, I'm sure it's a good assumption, be class based. From there, we have to begin the migration. The Office 365 migration will probably be the major time suck there, although as you've read from the RFP, there's a bulk load of library related technology that I suspect while not overly complicated will be unfamiliar to some of the consultants either to build compatible to set that transfer. The, the, that, I think is the gist. I mean, anybody can elaborate, but that's, that's the simplest version I can give you. The building of the network. You know, it's not rocket science. It's complicated, but may be hindered by supply chain. We don't know. The big work is really migration. I think, and that's fraught with peril and understanding of the current manner in which the city has constructed the
security policies.
Yeah, the access controls, security policies, all these different things, which we will need for them to even to the extent that they are willing and able to give us, you know, like hopefully like just give us the code, but I don't know. We'll see. That, that's one of those things where it's going to be building that compatibility will be, you know, time consuming. And it's literally every single thing will have to be checked. It's not a blanket thing. I think they could just dump on us and we can implement and then copy. I think we'll have to check every single program. Meeting room software.
So. I have a question.
Go for it.
Or maybe a series of questions. Um, so I guess what about, so, so your, your characterization, I think, is that the proposal is they give us two strands or what about the network infrastructure that was already here? The nodes, the cameras, the, the, the PCs? It looked like you were assuming they were going to give us those PCs.
No, our, our assumption is we will, I mean, we will hand back to the city every single thing that has a tax. Anything that has an asset tag, our assumption is we'll be handing those back to the city. It's probably cheaper for us to, there's obviously some hardware and stuff around the library that, let's let that happen as it happens.
Okay.
But the majority of the PCs and all of the network that now servers and those kinds of things that they have located in here are either theirs to leave and maintain as a city owned hardware.
Okay.
The PCs that we have, we will buy all replace them. So we can actually probably contract out to the RFP with permitting image all of those things in advance. Or we can do that internally where we work stolen computers at a time. Have them image with the Microsoft 365 and ready to go, so we hand out the PCs, the whole staff.
Yeah.
As well as the tools that would meet them. And then we build the public PC.
But that could be the PC replacements. Do you think that's going to be pretty expensive or?
Uh, you know, it'd be, it's six and one half. We'd have to spend money to swipe them clean, reimage the things and doing it actually in-house. All of those things would be in the net.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot of partners that's kind of lying around. Some of it brand new. Some of the things and.
Okay.
You know.
And then like the wifi on top of the buildings or like the public areas you're gonna, that's going to go back to the city?
Oh, so that came up, right? So they brought up the issue of some of the infrastructure the city has. And I know it's, this is all due to you all, and I, I don't want to surprise you or anything, but yes, the city maintains the connect folder. We would prefer that they leave that in place for the near term, right? So if that could operate as we build out an internal wireless infrastructure, both for staff and for public, the two could coexist. I don't see the need for them to move any of that technology. They're also using our buildings because that's one of the requirements for you know, we have to have a building. We have a building. So they're monitoring a lot and they're also doing some level of police surveillance, right? I would prefer that we left those things alone as well. They just separated out and connected to their network in a sense in which it probably is now, like I can name several cameras that are not connected to our network. So they are, the city already has them on there. So I don't think that.
If I can just interject, and there was a side conversation going on on the legal side. Because Benita and I are going to be talking about this, which can accompany tomorrow. And one of the things we have posed is that there are certain aspects of this that there should be a clean break. But there are certain areas where the library and the city probably want to continue collaborating to provide joint services because that's in the community's best interest. And that includes the cameras and the server stuff that's in the library and the wifi. So we'll raise that tomorrow and see if we can get a high level management cut on that.
So like your, your, your belief is then like if I'm inside the library, I'll still connect to connect folder, at least at the beginning.
That's true. It's possible we'll have the thing built out and all the hardware. In order to do it by January 1st, I don't.
No, that makes sense.
Because it's not critical to the business needs, but hey, and really it is a service to the community.
Right.
Which it does, we're not going to prohibit them from helping the.
Right, yeah.
Stuff to be.
I just wanted, because I think that's important for the IGA.
Well, I agree.
I think Amy's been a very good case for us potentially building out our own at some point. It makes sense for us to do so.
And the other piece that I took from this legal conversation was that we are in a position, we think, to handle the aspects that will allow us to transfer the employees by January 1st, since most of that's virtual. It's in the cloud. But we need the city to work with us on being able to get the Microsoft 365 data over. There's going to be some carryover into next year. We anticipate, we don't know how much until we see what the consultants come up with. But that we need to work out some way that we can make that part of the transition gradual. It can't be a clean break right on January 1st for that.
Yeah, I mean, there's some fudginess to January 1st, right? So January 1st is a you're shooting for January 1st to be prepared to make the entire transition, which would mean that we have done the migration of the Microsoft 365 client. It's to the extent that we've built up the active directory so that all the safety protocols, security, all that stuff is in place. It's possible that it will happen, right? But that, that is a possibility and not a, and not one that's entirely within our control. I think the biggest issues are the complexity of the current system and being able to decouple it, you know? And then second of all, the complexity totally without our control is the supply chain. We don't know if we can get all the stuff we need in time to do it. And so that may push our deadline to a totally different day. And for that, I would hope that when you're having that conversation with IT and as our conversation begins to develop with IT, should you get that proved that there can be some flexibility with regard to access to the network? I know it was raised the last time in September 1st where it's the big boogeyman in the room is like security concerns about various people getting on the network. The library staff are on the network all the time right now. Nobody has ever done anything nefarious that we know of as an inaccurate password that puts this network at risk. We're all very careful and I think we can come up with a way in which library staff could still have access to the network, even if they have to set up a, what do you call it, Amy, a sub-client within the network that allows the library access to that, which clearly cuts us off from being able to get to anything else. They, they, there has to be some element of flexibility around that data because should we we'll probably know in the next month or so, we're going to be able to get it January 1st, but I don't want to give up a lead deadline until the vendor that we've contracted with tells us like, you're never going to make it. Based on something.
Benita? So I was just curious about employees who work from home. And if there were certain policies that related to I don't know, the computer access or they have a separate one at home that they use that's by the library? Any dynamics that we should be aware of?
Not too many to in a week, though. There is VPN access. Obviously, it's like actual policy, you write about taking technology home. That will all be handled. We're sorting out the complexities of the decouple.
There was some complex, because we do the call secure. So the call secure occasionally is remote. That's a complex assignment, the working. Yeah. Connect. And so we, we have, we've done some things and that we said, we've and it's plus feature there. I see.
Are employees reimbursed for internet access use, you know, at home or do they get like a stipend for? Anyway.
We've, we've talked about it over the years, the city has, but never landed on anything. And it is, it, it has been done. Other districts do, do this. They, they will give a stipend for internet connection. Cell phone.
Yeah. That would be a good thing, I think, to continue discussing as the staffing people look at moving into, you know, more flexible schedule because of people are working at home regularly. It'd be a helpful thing. Sam?
Just so I'm clear, so if we meet our other headlines for the January 1st transition, we are in okay shape with IT regardless of where they are in transition to become a library district on January 1st?
I'm not sure I can put in the understanding. So if, yeah, obviously if we are a library. I'm sorry to separate from the city. Yeah, to completely separate from the city will entail that we are able, I believe, to do the two major portions of of the, of what is defined the RFP. So that is build an independent freestanding network. Library Office 365. Mostly the active directory. If there's data, like we haven't even talked about it, like the data that the staff have access to, their files, their email archives, all those different things. Their workarounds there. So that, that is something that I can easily imagine could take six months. But we've done it in the past and we just put in our deadlines and they all like to get it done by and download their own stuff to a flash drive and then. So that was a dual switch.
Amy, what is your biggest concern at this point?
Supply chain issues is a concern because like David said, it's outside of our control. Making sure we have all the security policies set up. We've got got the right active directory for, for staff. It's really the technology surrounding the staff. So they're able to do their work as a district employee. So Microsoft 365 network, those are going to be our top priorities as we move into. I don't know that I have any real like concern, concerns on the supply chain because that's just something outside of our control. But I, I'm confident that if we're allowed to work with the city as a partner in making this transition, then I think it's, I a lot of my anxieties will be relieved because we'll be able to communicate work out the logistics of this. Because they'll need to provide access to the vendor, whatever consultant we select, they're going to need to provide access to the network side of things to help with migration and things like that. So.
Do you have any sense of like, if you were placing an order for PCs or whatever, like what would be your preferred date of like getting that order in? How do you say that? I always thought maybe yesterday. It was going to be yesterday or today. Yeah. What, what date would give you like real hard work?
Um.
Month?
There's, there's still a lot of unknowns. I don't know what I can answer.
So at this point, I've spoken. So we have eight recommended vendors. Is a real concern and they can't ask that question until they know exactly what is the library, but. Yeah. There's five, the three, and I, the other three, I haven't even spoken to them. I mean, I've called them and referenced. The product so continues like this is what they do. This is the business they're in. They all cited examples where they built out systems significantly larger than ours to extend prior to networks and, you know, 30 days time. So we're, we're basically, we're scheduling out for a hundred days. To January 1st, basically a hundred days, right? And that's kind of what I tell everyone on the phone is like we're aiming for our goals other days. Does that scare you? And if so, I won't sue the RFP, but none of them seem even slightly dotted by it. You know, the network design thing is a big deal, but like Bob's in this one as well, too. I mean, okay, you know, Bob and almost everybody I can talk to can probably design or point it out, right? And then like, then it's a matter of like working through all the questions about compatibility. Doing all those things, which is like time and months, but all that work has to be done before we're going to be able to make use of the PCs that we provide staff anyway. And so what difference does it make? For two weeks, two months on the waiting list to get the, you know, it takes 60 days to get the PCs in. They will come, if we are a vendor, they will come imaged to, you know, bury the it's possible. Saying it's certainly not 100%, right? But everybody, everybody on the team always concerned, like, and I, I'm sure them, nobody's hands, nobody's hands rolling, like we're, we have a goal. That's all it is to follow.
The RFP is the next thing. Why don't we just switch into that conversation if there's anything we can talk about, if people have questions about that?
Happy to take questions. If you all have a chance to read it, I don't know if you did. I mean, the RFP, January.
We have a copy. We two like.
Oh, you do. You know, it, it, I think it speaks for itself. There were several ones who kind of nailed this down. I mean, I talked into the five entries I talked to. They, we, we landed on the date for September 5th, I think, deadline turning puzzles. But I'm you know, I think what's in your best interest is we talked about it and I talked to Johnny, I don't know, on Friday or the weekend. I have the most stressful part of my job is not doing all of this work. The most stressful part of my job is being in a position where I have to make decisions alone. And our recommendations are given. And so the fact that you are perhaps willing to have a member of the community participate on making that selection and perhaps even one person might be willing to participate in making that selection. I think will both bring better brains to the table and more brains and will help us to hold that contribution process. And at least I think Sam, which has worked with the benefits broker, which the benefits broker was the four million decision, right? This one, this one I call the million dollar decision. But that one happened pretty smoothly.
Yeah, and pretty.
And so I, and I appreciate Sam in terms of retaining that idea, but the plan is, the plan we're spoken to, I will send them the RFP tomorrow. I hope they'll call me back tomorrow because I'll send messages into them. Subsequently, they will have an opportunity to talk with me in broad strokes like we're doing tonight and or ask very direct questions in terms of technological questions to maybe show how that if Amy cannot answer it, we'll be able to forward some of those questions on to city IT or Amy can ask the question of city IT. Over respond to vendor, but so the reality of our fees, right? Our fees are not perfect. I don't know how many you'll put out. I put out tons. You, you know, if you're, if you get to 92% baked, you're doing awesome, right? I'd say this one's probably 80, 85% baked. But there are going to be, there are questions in there that we all look at. I mean, I think you guys drive red of it, but like, oh, oh, this is, we don't know what's on the knowledge. And so like, we're not going to be able to answer the vendor. So there is a large assumption that you're asking the vendors to put the best proposal that they can for you. And to have two of us as a partner to help figure out some of the answers to some of the questions that are already at the RFP. And if they're answered, we'll still respond. So I hope that no RFP is ever.
Do you post this on Bit, Bitnet?
We will not. But yeah, so what we'll do is what we've done in the past is we have identified recommended vendors. So we've cast a fairly wide net in terms of recommendations. City IT or library districts of libraries in the areas and private vendors that we've asked them for recommendations for IT companies. I'm doing this. I have a list of nine. There's one that I, when I did my research, I'm fine. I can't really, and I double checked on them because I don't know. Associates. City IT has never worked with them. So my plan is to send them into these eight, should they all respond and express an interest in. Associates, um, city IT has never worked with them, so my plan is to send them into these eight, should they all respond and express an interest in. And so far, I've talked to five and they're all interested.
So we are not required to take any action with respect to the RFP tonight. But I think it would be good if it was of action to affirm that Kara and Doug will sit on the selection committee as representatives of the trustees and that Andy can also be part of the selection committee to continue to give us his advice. Since I know he did a lot to help get the RFP into shape. Yeah, not of the head, I mean, I think that's probably all we need.
So the plan is like, the massive rapid fire, we'll talk about it as we go, but like the, the way in which we did it for the, um, health benefits broker, uh, was the, uh, it's a due on, I think it's September fifth. We can either provide all the bits to you and you can help us narrow down the list, the benefits broker is we narrowed a little bit, but any of us narrow the ways to. That was it. And so the interviews, when it comes, we would hope that you could complete the evaluation that same week. So we create after Labor Day, and then we would schedule interviews for the two or three finalists. And that would be really helpful to consider for the interviews because I feel like Sam and Jen have brought a lot to those interviews, just for having.
Yeah, good questions for something we're going to be spending millions of dollars on.
And thank you again to all you guys for your time and.
Well, and so I just, I don't have any issues with person Andy, um, but I just wondered if there is some agreement or something that, you know, I think it's an NDA, but I, you know, just wonder if there's something that you know, should be agreed to between the trustees and this individual who we've invited, I guess, to be a part of this. I don't know, I just wondered, you know, because we were reluctant to have commission members be on subcommittees for our own reasons, right? But I, you know, and you know, it sounds like he has particular expertise, but I just wondered, is there something that I don't know, should be formally agreed to with him or could anybody, you know, do this that people? No, I, I just think the minutes should reflect, you know, that the board like agreed to this in some official way.
Yeah, I think that was why we just raised this now.
Yeah.
You need to maybe, we just say like, again, Andy probably will do this, but we adhere to our conflict of interest, you know, rules like not picking a cousin or sister or something of Andy's, you know, like, uh, that probably be I don't know if our deliberations um, on the RFP process would be confidential, um, or protected, potentially. Uh, but he probably wouldn't be negotiating the agreement, so that piece would be, so, um, I guess it's here, I mean, we have a conflict of interest policy, and so, I mean, Andy, maybe if you take a look at that.
Yeah, just for total transparency.
Yeah.
I did ask Andy before any of this conversation transpired, if he could get me any potential vendors to reach out to. And he said, I only work for really huge companies and we do everything in-house, I don't know anybody, and so he gave me none of the vendors on the list. City of Boulder contacts that paid gas within and then privately through a vendor that I'm using in terms of financial and, uh,
And we, and we probably, and we should probably just let the minutes reflect to that. He's not receiving any compensation for this and or any time.
No, I agree, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I get that, no, I think that's, that's, we should build that record.
Yeah.
And, um, and that also, um, that he agreed to take, you know, our conflict of interest thing and then also that, um, yeah, he's not receiving any compensation, I think it's probably.
You want to craft a motion, Doug? And just include those things in it to.
And the fact that he, he's sitting here through this is like.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
And that way it will be firmly on record.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, you know, and as we consider other volunteer experts' help in the future, I just think it provides us a track record.
I'll do that while.
Okay, well, let us watch you.
So Ariel, um, Bob's company. Does not see the current fee, um, which seems weird, but like it's okay, uh, because we brought in one initially to be able to, to you, to advise you on the IGA. We've kind of excluded Bob from those conversations lately because he has expressed, his company has expressed an interest in bidding on this transition, so, um, just so that's clear as well. I'm not seeing the RFP, we'll get it tomorrow when everybody else starts getting it.
Anything else then on IT and we can come back to the motion when Doug has had a chance to pull his thoughts together for the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next piece up then would be the health benefits broker, and again, Sam, you and Jen have been doing yeoman's work on this. Thank you for all the time we've been putting in as well. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, well, David and Jennifer as well. I mean, I just, I think the five responses to the RFP. Um, we all reviewed them, took notes and, and it wasn't hard to get to. I don't think David, we all agreed on the two finalists, and we brought them in for, uh, conferred some interviews uh, today last week and yesterday, right? Have them regional firm, we have a really old, big firm called FH, and that's the one that we left them in. Uh, David, you want to summarize what you started for the highest value, like the point?
Um, you know, we, the criteria, we think Charles told vendors, can you do the job? Can you do the job at the time we need and have them like you for your service and all five firms, at least four firms responded adequately to the proposal. Uh, two of them, I think, did a much better job. And then from a service point of view, really the questions that we asked, and we own that points that it had a a level of service and a service philosophy which was in mind, I think, was what we're hoping to be up to provide to the library staff, so. That's down to very specific recommendations for in-person contact with the staff, um, openness to share telephone numbers, willingness to, you know, do in-person open enrollments, and then I think the second really deciding factor for me at least was the degree of, uh, critical analysis they took towards the current benefits plan we offer. FH both in their proposal and in the interviews showed an extraordinary grasp of our current plan, what weaknesses it had. Basically, you know, this thing you could have, you said, maybe this plan is going to be just for families. They could point to three things as to why that. So they had done, they had done it in terms of analyzing that.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting that some of the feedback in the employee benefits survey, um, some of the specific comments, they identified as well, and they didn't see the results of that survey, but they and it was my sense that they were the only one of the five that had really dug deep into, into our existing plan. And, and so my value in Jen's and I know David and Jennifer's is, uh, want the best service for, for our staff. I don't want them to have the hassle, the problem with the claim. And these folks, I feel, brought the, the strongest, you know, uh, sense of that to me. Um, through specific examples and through the thoroughness of their, uh, research into our situation and our plan and, uh, you know, uh, they're, they're women owned, they're local, they have a, an interesting and creative, um, thing that they've set up in town, a, uh, wouldn't call it a free clinic because we pay per employee for access to it, but how it works is if an employee wants to participate, there's this clinic staff by doctors that they can go to on like a day or less notice. That was their commitment, right? You can get in that day or the next day. And sixty to ninety minute visits with the physicians, should you like that amount of time. Um, and, uh, we didn't, I didn't fact check this, but they said that other large insurers have been looking at this with admiration, uh, both from a service standpoint and a potential cost saving standpoint. So that's something, I mean, we talked about this, we don't know who's going to use it, but we think it's a cool thing and, and some people like I just remembering when I had little kids and wanting to get them seen immediately, uh, could be a, a great benefit to our staff, so. And that's right here in town.
Yeah, I mean. It's pretty hard, they can do to make our plan better. improvement on the current plan. It does have an upfront cost, but there's no commitment, they're not asking us to sign a contract to stay for a year. Uh, we can do it for a month, we want, they recommend it a minimum of six months, see if they can increase enrollment. Their data shows that higher number of people that actually need to be like, you know, that they can bring our costs down. All this experience with the current messed up, um, healthcare system in the United States that a lot of times, um, simply going into the emergency room, having a going in for a lot of different testing without social disposition for it or for some kind of private patient, just makes it like you have enormous costs, certainly. This is a means that they designed to help edit that off and provide a more personal.
I also liked that they don't have more than fifty percent of their business with any one carrier. A carrier, sorry, you know, it gives me pause if someone says, you know, sixty to seventy percent of their businesses with one carrier as the other broker did. So like the, they spread it around or said that they didn't care. And, you know, I just, you know, you got the, you, you got the, the feeling that they were going to work hard for us in a way that that they want them to and that maybe they're everything.
Good evening, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes, please complete your library business and exit abilities, thank you.
Do they have any clients? Do they have any clients like us?
I don't think they have any library system.
They don't have any library system, so they have a lot of Boulder products that you recognize, so.
Rose Closet was one of, um. Something pretty, about the same size as us, I think.
Yeah, or bigger, they may have substantially larger costs.
So this clinic offering, um, what hospital system do they align with? These doctors are BCH doctors or who are they?
As I understood it, are independent employees of this clinic. And related, and it's.
It's a private practice.
Yeah, essentially, the, the, the carrier, wh- whatever insurance you have, um, you know, would direct to which hospital he might go to or not.
So a lot of the carriers currently, like they have, um,
Right, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, so a lot. So a lot of it, and I, I learned a lot from the, like, the insurance business, much if I needed to, but a lot of carriers do have preferred private practices affiliated with hospitals because of the, uh, supply chain, right? Like, so it is a, it is a mechanism through which then you go to that hospital for the testing. They know that's set up for the manner in which they get referral, so their insurance company, that kind of thing, so. This is not that, um, this is a kind of like a, I think it's a Kaiser, I guess, it's almost like.
But like the independent doctors, even if they're, they have to be certified by the hospital system, so that's why I'm wondering if they're certified by BCH or some other.
I don't know the answer, that we can follow up.
You mean for like admitting privileges?
Yeah, yeah, and like their licensing.
Admitting privileges as well, but.
Yeah, no, I just hadn't ever heard of such a clinic and like sixty minutes would be a long time because the standard appointment is twenty.
Some people, they do want that time, so I think that could be valuable. I asked them about the retention of their doctors, like are they journeying through new docs or something, and I think their answer was uh, not great there, but, um, he said three to four doctors in ten years, yeah, but so not, not terrible. And I, you know, uh, like I said, uh, we, I'd be like, to give it, uh, to have our employees give it a try, you know? It's not something people take advantage of, but they have a bad experience, you don't have to continue on.
I think, I think it's sort of as a culture fit, it's going to be nervously. Uh, one of the things that, I mean, I've been, we've been, we've been crashing, I don't know if you realize how much crashing, you know, I'm talking to salespeople. I'm meeting with a lot of salespeople every single week. It's great when I can get an engineer on the phone or something like that, talk to him like with our here. With BH, we never spoke to a salesperson. From the initial contact, uh, it was the owner that called you back entirety of their proposal, they never made one sales pitch or promise. Uh, in the interview, they never made one sales pitch or promise, the one thing that they said, which I could construe as a sales pitch was you don't understand, we want you to, to pick us, that was it. They didn't say like, we're going to do this for you, but when I called them back and said, I'd be on the firm just getting some five-year lock-in on the price, I said, okay, we'll do that. All right, what kind of contract do you want? We don't want a contract, we have to earn your business every month, that's kind of how they play it.
It's FH, I think, is it?
FH, yeah.
Yeah, I, I like, yeah, I like the, the personal nature, I didn't review the other things, but personal nature of the proposal, I thought was was nice. What about mental, I mean, for mental health, um, this clinic, they wouldn't go there, they could use Cigna or whatever there to, to find a provider and network and get the help.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see, right? So and I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I know now today, right?
The library will be closing in ten minutes, please complete your library business and exit ability, thank you.
I think it'll depend on what kind of plan.
Yeah, so that's not, that is the data that I got today. We will have that information, if you're able to do it, but I, I don't know, and it's, it is a fair question. But we will have to, we may back up on this for our health clinic in six or eight months, if we can't get enrollment up because it's not cheap, right? Like, having the cost or paying to the clinic has a long-term benefit, perhaps, reducing the cost of our healthcare.
But is it?
Cost down, but if, 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 if staff decide they don't want to do it, which is peaceful in my mind, then, then we were not going to pay for that service.
And we pay a monthly fee or whatever for that, and then would there be a co-pay or?
Oh, that's.
That's, it's free, okay, I'm not messing up, all right, yeah, okay, that's cool.
It's interesting, right? So I, I mean, this is a big decision for you guys, right? It's like, it's millions of dollars and having talked healthcare plans, done the survey, a number of people came to me, um, you know, I had some good, I, I am a healthy person, I have not had any healthcare issues, and so like honestly, I haven't spoken to a provider in, uh, for determining what things to take, uh, what and what, uh, best plan works for me for years, for different, I just go online, I fill it out in five minutes online, and that's probably for the past twenty years. There are a lot of staff who spend quite a lot of time thinking about China and. There are a lot of staff who spend quite a lot of time thinking about timing and. In fact, we're low income staff, they are looking at a lot of the plans strictly from the branch. Question that they're asking themselves is not, how is my health? How can I improve it and what steps do I need to take to get there? It's how much can I afford? To pay for my health this year, how much can I set aside in the H S A that then I can apply to my healthcare? So that is. And so I think a free clinic. Without time co-pays is going to be appealing to a lot of employees. I think I think a number of employees would think like. That makes sense, maybe I can go in this place and consult with a doctor, and kids. Husband can go, whatever it is.
Yeah.
I mean, you meet for free and there's not a dime in my pocket right away, right? Which has been probably.
Yes, has, is the coverage for you as an individual or you and family?
Uh, we will provide those, right? So you can select one or the other. Uh, there.
Do you have to pay?
Yeah, different costs.
Yeah, different costs.
Right, but I mean, like, so you as an employee are covered hundred percent for whatever policy choose, and then do you pay additional? For family members or family members all included?
For the boulder, the clinic?
No, 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 for right now, under, you know, an employee who has a spouse and two kids.
Yeah, so you select a plan for a family plan, and then if you have an eventual life changing event, you can actually. Well, you're going my wife is the one who played where Charles removed my life and kids to my husband. Otherwise, you selected it in the open. Select a. Family or just yourself. Your spouse or partner.
But you're paying for that incrementation additional, yes, okay.
Can you share with us how many?
I got, I got the census.
How many are what?
No, we we couldn't know how many of the staff are on the health plan. We weren't, we had signed up a broker.
Yeah, it's a proxy, I think, I'm guessing now from just glancing this. There there were some questions I have about the census data, so the city provided me a census today. So the census lists. The enrollment and unionization of. Employees and anomalies and. And yeah, so it's my neighbors in the current health plan. There were some anomalies in the. Census that I sent the questions back with regard to some of the other kinds of the offer like. Life insurance, dental and. Uh, vision and stuff like that, I I I can't imagine that it's correct, I I just don't know, maybe it is. In those case, in which case, those numbers are really, really, really far. I think it's wrong. Right now, let's.
So assuming. We all approve this tonight, uh, I want to make sure I know the next steps.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
I missed this at Meadows.
So they'll they'll take the census data, they'll come back to. Uh, you and Jennifer on the staff and subcommittee with. Some options.
Yeah.
And then we'll review them. Uh, at what point will we? Share them with the staff and have that listening session that we talked about?
Yes, I think those are gonna come, right? So the current timing, we, I had meetings about super colleges today, so. Fire rose is about. But I I said we had a lot of balls in the air, like the boss started running, right? So the employee handbook, which I'm currently here to support. Uh, we have a draft that is up several years now. The plan is for it to land with all. September fifth, right? So it's being, it will be checked by employees council. Next couple of weeks, uh, we'll be ready to go out there, everybody. The health benefits package, the draft, both of these are yours. Now, the benefits package will probably land the following week on about the twelfth. Which is exactly the date that you and Jen, we are scheduled to meet with all staff. Uh, for a Q and A session, I think a lot of their questions will be around, um. Most of the questions at that point, I think, are gonna be on the playbook, which is the. Which is the policies and practices of the library in terms of hiring and and all that. So they will have a lot of questions, I'm sure, on. Leave time, agreement leave, F M L A and all that. Health related, the health related plan, those questions will probably come subsequent. Two to four weeks prior to. Assembling the final package and the budget. You will then refer to you in mid to late September.
I thought that the proposal was really, really nice, I'd love to have that as my health plan, so. It was impressive. And you know, I'm I'm come out of the federal system, always had really good health. Plans because they have the power to negotiate, you know, negotiates among the folks, so from that perspective. It's a really, really good plan, better than anything I've ever seen, so. Good work, guys. It works, so I think we need a motion to approve. Um, hiring F H. Is their name health benefits, um. Design and design and management program.
Don't move that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Kara, okay, Sam and Kara, any further conversation? All right, all those in favor? I pass the six, seven, all right, let's step backwards. Mister Hamilton.
Oh, yeah, I prepared my motion. Free of charge.
Will you please stand?
Uh, like writing out a uh. An order at the back of the courthouse. Anyway, uh. Go back there and craft the order, okay, so, um. So just listen to it, I'm not gonna make it and then I'll, and then they can decide it, but. Uh, motion to appoint Andy Saylor. As part of the I T subcommittee for the purpose of selecting I T infrastructure provider. And advising on library, I T, library district, I T infrastructure, provided that Mister Sayer accepts such role on a voluntary basis. And agrees to abide by the library district conflict of interest policy. Anything? Um, I should include in there or anything else?
Sounds good.
Mm-hmm. Um. We can say, or and act in best interest of the district or something, okay, we'll add that in there, okay? Okay, okay, I'll do it again, now. Doug, uh, Mister Hamilton motions to appoint Andy Saylor as part of the I T subcommittee. For the purposes of selecting the I T infrastructure provider and advising on. Our library district's I T infrastructure provided. That Mister Saylor accepts such role on a voluntary basis and agrees to abide by the library district's conflict. Of interest policy and act in the best interest of life.
Great, there a second? Second. Okay, I need a seconds.
Attention, the library is now closed, thank you for joining us today and we look forward to seeing you again.
All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Yay, so the next thing then is considering approval of the new human resources information management, information system provider. Um, and this is the software component of this.
Yeah, so it's Johnny asked me to, goes few words of pay velocity, so what an H R. So, you know, it's a. We refer to them as, you know, it's it's the system where. You basically put all the things, it's like you put in all of the, it captures all time entry. Captures all your benefits information, it's the means by which we pay staff, but it's also a means by which we track. All their time off, requests for time, holidays, overtime. It is that kind of. Basic system, this is the one that we've been using Workday for some time, I think three or four years. Uh, Workday was a very robust product, it did require staff to clock in and clock out. And figure that's the staff, how are they staff, they'll be able to enter their time. Either daily or weekly, uh, we make the decision, yeah, that they can actually be in good time. Uh, pay velocity, um. They pay last, he was selected out of again. For this one, it's. I I'm not gonna be usual, right? I love the reporting features that all of them had, I love. Reporting features that Workday has, but honestly, all I do is go in and do my time, so. Uh, the 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 majority of the staff, really public service staff, and then ultimately Jennifer and her staff. Will be the ones who have to use it to manage the payroll system. Uh, and so there was a lot of us involved in the demos and reviews and products. Uh, by a long shot, Payocity was the highest rated one being reviewed. Um, I'd I'd say more or less unanimous across all the staff groups that we had to review it, um. I was the one holdout for, because I just wanted to check in the true references, and so. I called up people that hated them, like the people that loved them, I called up people tween. Uh, and talked it all through, and I feel really comfortable. Uh, with recommending Payocity as the best. System that we could have right now, the features, they're a little bit ahead of the game, right, so. Workday is its own behemoth, there there are no, not many like it, um. Payocity is among a group of level fast growing H R I S systems in the country, Payocity was listed. The last decade of the fastest growing companies in the. United States and certainly fastest H R I S growing system, um, they built out a lot of nice features. Very attractive, right? Like they do employee surveys, they do. Custom, like just a bunch of stuff that's. I don't know how we're gonna use it yet, but uh, some of those features, but the basic infrastructure is based around. Timekeeping and payroll benefits administration, so. For that, it's good, our uh.
We got bizarrely excited when they said we were gonna move to Payocity, the.
Who did?
F H, the benefits.
The benefits.
Just approved.
They all have to work very closely together, right? So the benefits minister here. Turns out, we did hire them before we hired the. Uh, H R I S system, but we're basically. They need to. And. F H was pleased because they worked with Payocity.
Not, it looks owned by like another bigger software company, they're just there on.
No, a different company, they're out of Chicago, uh, I don't know how long they've been in this, I didn't do a lot of research in all companies. None of them were called, basically finalists were, one was out of Utah. Uh, another one was out of Cincinnati, and the other was.
Since nineteen ninety seven. So it was founded in ninety seven.
Ninety seven.
Google, yeah. I just wondered, a lot of times these companies are like. Technically offshoots of like much bigger software companies, I just wondered if this is one of them, it sounds like that.
I think they mostly all, they they all have been around for a while, all the companies we've talked to, uh. Most of them came recommended through, uh. Well, Amy did a lot of the, Amy's here, did a lot of the research on H R I S systems, and so. Almost all that we interviewed had won either recently a Forbes award for. Some stellar thing or highly recommended or good ratings on. This I T software network evaluation system or Patreon professionals come in and. Say what they like, so they all came in fairly highly rated, and they were all very comparable, one similar to the others, which. I liked and nobody else did, um. Another one that was basically as robust as. Uh, Payocity, but maybe, maybe I think in the estimation, it's half a little flunkier and didn't have all the features that we might. They all had the features for certain to use, and that's time tracking payroll benefits. They obviously just have.
The cost and. Is it? Built into our budget and.
Yeah, no, it's fine, it's, yeah, it's like, it's, so Workday is what we listed.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, they're like a part of the cost. And that, they didn't cut us a good discount, that was part of being a member of uh, employers council, we got a discount. Players council, we also, they decided to knock off the patient, so that was just. Because it took me three weeks to call all the, not three weeks, or a week or two to call all the references. They changed their initial grid down by knocking off all the patient. But, um, I have to give you this kind of things, sales. But just do. Maybe something they do for.
Probably something, yeah, so I think it's stalling.
And I, I had some contacts that said they hated it and something along the.
So, uh, I'm assuming we have to approve it because it's over the. It's dollar fish, that's that.
Correct. So can we get a motion to approve Payocity as our human resource information system provider?
Yeah.
Okay, Sam moves it, second?
Second.
Doug seconds? All those in favor? It passes unanimously. All right, library district director update.
So I'll touch on it just briefly, I mean, I did get the banking. Documents back. I think yesterday, except of. Uh. You can't, so Kim's gonna review them to see whether they are, I think, I think we've made it to this legal phase, I hope. Because they did send me both a response to the right of my motion. Executable form, um. Those were acceptable, but hopefully we're very close banking. Um, Jennifer and I, uh, did decide. Mostly, I decided. Last Tuesday, but we had been thinking about it and talking about it, about bringing a project manager on. So we brought a project manager firm on this past week to help us with the. The overall transition, primarily uh, with the implementation of the H R I S system, I lost, which you just. Uh, approved, and then subsequently to help us with the. Uh, the migration of all the data. Um, they signed a contract within, uh, not to exceed, uh, price. Of twenty thousand dollars, that is a pretty fresh one, but. The the firm is called Leadline, their local firm, Jennifer and I have both. Worked with the principal of the company, another female in the company, uh, we worked at the principal. We really think that they can bring us a benefit right now, especially with all the balls in the air and some coming down. Uh, those implementation things are gonna take a chunk of change out of somebody's hands. And we need a, we need a fresh does project education, so. Uh, you'll get a chance to meet them, I'm really tentatively, uh. When you're. Jennifer, come today, I think I meet with them later on this week, we're gonna get them on your schedule. For sometime late in September to just do an overall kind of, uh. Transition. Update, right? Like, so where are we on all of these various uh, things that are currently within, um. The Gantt chart that Jennifer has built, I'm looking at. With some frequency to kind of keep projects.
Can can you just briefly mention, um, the background to this, someone I thought that was interesting when you shared it, that the she was a city employee and.
Yeah, so this whole, that, so the 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 woman, she was the initial project manager for COVID. That's where we all kind of really got to, I I had known prior of that, but then when. COVID landed, she became the project manager for the. Nation of the. The city's reaction to it and the coordination of the economic response. Uh, the staffing response, and then also how to, uh. You know, disseminate all the federal money, discern and disseminate all the federal. Broad project management, uh, you know, she, after that major transition was done, the. Pairs, grants were landed and everything like that, I think. A year and a half later, two, two, two and a half years ago, she left the city to form her own company. Uh, she's had a lot of interesting clients, subsequently, I think. All the big ones that she's working with now is the. Sounds like just such an interesting job, she's doing the project management for the state's, uh. New district, so the new voting district, Colorado has six, so she's managing.
The A, the A C D?
The A C, yeah, the A, so she's, she's managing that, her, her and her team are managing that project. Uh, our plan is to primarily work with her, but she has a whole group of people. Uh, so if one of these does know, I know her as well, uh, from also being a former city employee. Um, so we'll probably.
Or the name of the company?
Leadline is the name of the company, and you know, you would ask me your name right now, and. It's Amanda. Jennifer, are you there? Or maybe not, Amanda.
I'm here, uh, Amanda, let me look.
My brain.
Like all of the things. So all the consultants, all the transitions there. That's how I.
Amanda Cole, exactly. Very much, Amanda Cole, yes. And I think that concludes my report. Um, oh, one last. So the request from visuals on the budget presentation, we'll have three samples to show you. At September fifth meeting, I I will probably present, I'm not gonna subject, I. Graphic designer to public scrutiny for a board of trustees, um, so I will probably bring them on, J D Cop, he will do stuff. Uh, but she's got some samples already that she likes, it's just a matter of what needs. Several different ways. Uh, no, it's both for you and for the, the public presentation of the budget. Because I think, I mean, we do plan to put out dress releases. And I think ideally we want some feedback on it. Alyssa Sessia is the name of the designer. She's been with us for a long time, a number of years. She will be designing the handouts for the public table link that we're gonna do as well. But that's not, I, I don't think we're planning on incorporating the budget in that. But I told her to design those list stuff from your current webpage and crafting around the language. It will probably, it will be a visual representation, so it will be probably picture heavy than text heavy, but it will include all the boxes. So she should have something for me. Frame section in September, but I, I haven't tried to bring back choice, certainly bring back a document you need to ask for it to be changed, and we can make those changes that will be best. Those changes are text-based because that will be handled by Amy, our communications person, who's coordinating that. That's.
Great. Subcommittee reports. So can I just ask one question? So I missed the role of Amanda Cole.
Yeah.
What is her role going to be?
A project manager. So it's a project management firm, so we're gonna use them initially for familiarization with overall project transition. I think we showed you early on the kind of smart sheets, Gantt chart, the timekeeping on all of these various things to get to the budget, hiring day and the transition day. So that will be one that she will be overseeing and working with Jennifer and I early on. The second thing that she will pick up now immediately is the implementation of Pay Velocity. So Pay Velocity is the HRIS timekeeping software that we'll be using. And it's gonna require pretty much a touch point with almost every single staff person that we have currently with the city. And so that is why we really could need a lot of back and forth between managers and supervisors in terms of like how they're gonna utilize the system and how we tend. Got it. After that, please hopefully complete achieving the migration office three, six, and five, and all the data, which is gonna have a ton of moving parts and a lot of places where we're gonna have to go back and forth between the city or partner firm of the, we have to sit back and Amy Shum, whatever. So that's a major.
And I thought her city background well positions her for that. That's why I stated you mentioned that.
Yeah, she's doing, she's doing, she's doing the broadband for the city bonus, another project she is currently managing with the city. I think she's worked on everything from street closures downtown. So she's had a lot of major city projects that she's been able to manage with a huge smile on her face and somehow to be beloved by all. It's a word. Keep everybody on target. Keep on target and keep smiling and.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay. Any subcommittee updates? We've heard from staffing. Philly just doesn't have anything.
Although we are meeting with the city, I guess, next week.
Yeah, we've got a meeting set up to get some more costs, we hope.
Yeah.
Okay. Legal counsel status report, yeah.
And I think you had the report, you had two action items and you.
Okay, great. Um, so do we need to go into an executive session to prepare for tomorrow? Because I thought it might be helpful to share, I know, I saw it here, I was surprised too. Yeah, and Kim is not going to put that in the packet, that's just trustees. Did you point that out to folks so they could read it? Or I don't think we have to read. No, not yet. I haven't, I haven't done anything with that. We need to go into. So let's briefly go into an executive session. Nina can update us on her conversation with Claire and Kim, you know, maybe anything you can update us, conversations with the attorneys and go from there. Chris, thank you for. Where's this meeting tomorrow? I don't seem to have a calendar. You know what's that? I I have. There was a calendar item.
You have a location.
That's what I was asking about.
We just went to the manager's office and they'd send us somewhere, but I didn't.
Yeah, I'm just looking.
It's like overwhelmed. Now I can't show up, this stuff doesn't show up on my other.
Yeah, so two oh six, right? Second floor, okay. So we'll just go to the reception and then. Yeah. That's the same way to go. Okay. Ten.
Oh.
Okay, Jennifer, are we back recording? Okay, and so we are going to adjourn at seven forty-two P M. Thank you.
The whole there.